Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 school committee meeting. Just a reminder, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. Introductions, starting from my left.
Sharon Kierding.
Robert Mullen.
Good evening, Julie Costucci.
Good evening, Mark Brink, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Anthony Tannen.
Paul Mitchell.
Becky Stanton.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
KJ Moore, State Representative.
We'll all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like to seek a motion to approve the September 10th, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie 600. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, with two pieces of correspondence to talk about. Now, the ones in your drive, we received a phone call that we had with Select Energy. We did send you a letter off as required about two weeks ago. We did receive a response from Select. They were very apologetic. They understand our frustration. They understand that the delays in getting the panels hooked up was problematic and that they potentially could have been more proactive. They will be at our September, our October 15th meeting to present options and alternatives that we can look at for what we want our students to have access to, whether it's a kiosk or some kind of meter. So, they will be here on October 15th to answer our questions and talk about next steps with the solar panels.
Good.
The second piece of communications is for Dr. Brink.
So, last week, we heard from the Bureau of Education that they had an independent audit on the MCAS exam after getting some feedback from students about a particular question that was on the English Language Arts exam last spring. It was found to be biased in some ways and they were afraid that it would have impacted the students' comfort level in taking the rest of the test. So, as a result of that feedback, they had put out a list through the Dropbox that we use to identify students who were close to being projected to earn the Adams Scholarship, which is a scholarship for state college and university tuition. And there's a criteria of getting proficient, two exams proficient and one advanced and then being in the top 25 percent of your class in MCAS. So, unfortunately, the results of the tests were public and weren't sent to parents yet, but the window for the retake is this Friday. So, the recommendation from the DSE was that districts met with the kids. So, what happened was, this trainer, Mr. Ogden, met with the identified students, about 91 kids here, and things broke who were right on the cusp that could have been affected. They had a conversation with the kids. Could you recall the question? If you feel in any way that you were impacted by this type of question and that that impacted your ability to move forward, take the exam, you need to let us know by Friday. You can sit for a retest, which will be a three-day paper and pencil, old legacy version of the test. At this time, we've only heard from one particular student with a question about it, but that window will close Friday. So, we just wanted you to know that that letter was sent home to families yesterday and that the administration has met with all of those kids just to give them an update.
So, 91 of 120 juniors were impacted by this. So, larger schools are dealing with an issue of hundreds of kids. So, and that's all we have for communication, correspondents.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? See you none. Share the success. KJ?
Hello. So, from now on, in the Share the Success, I will be expanding the scope of topics from just a high school to all the Tingsborough public schools. For this week, I did not get a response from the middle school in time, so it's only going to be the high school and elementary school for this week.
Hmm.
Just we're here, I guess, we'll...
So, I'm just going to start with some things that have been going on in the high school. On Sunday, September 29th, the PALS held a PALS picnic on the Riverfront Park where the members of PALS then played games. And on Tuesday, September 24th, the NHS hosted a practice induction within the school to prepare for the actual induction, which will be October 9th at 6:30. The boys varsity soccer team played their senior night game last night against Hudson. And a lot of high school students are beginning to prepare for next week, which is homecoming in the high school. Additionally, the Students of the Month for October were announced. So, congratulations to Amber Bean, Samantha Fagundes, Alex Kilman, and Jack Boucher. And then finally, the Student Council at the high school hosted their first meeting this year on Wednesday, 25th. And then, for what's going on in the elementary school, on September 16th, TES joined millions of students across the globe in celebration of International DOT Day. The DOT is the story of a caring teacher who dares a doubting student to trust in her own abilities by being brave enough to make her mark. In kindergarten to grade five, students have been strengthening their mathematical skills through math talks. Math talks provide students with an opportunity for deeper understanding through communication. Individually and/or in groups, students are articulating and defending their ideas and analyzing their own reasonings. And then Sergeant Steve Mannings, the School Research Officer, has begun his weekly life lesson skills in grade five. Next month, he'll meet with individual classrooms on Halloween safety. And finally, our after-school enrichment programs are in full swing at the elementary school. This trimester, students are engaged in Student Council, reading ambassadors, mathletes, yoga, coding, and tuneful tigers. And that is what's happening in all our new schools.
Excellent.
Lot going on, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 9B out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie 600.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, we'd like to bring in each of our schools to talk about the opening of the year. As you said last meeting, Mrs. Cavanaugh completely put a work on students. I'm saying that because she's sitting here. But no, it was great to have a student presentation. So, I know that Mr. Pollitt has lots of students here tonight talking a little bit about the opening of TMS and all the exciting things happening there. So, Mr. Pollitt and Paul.
So, following this, Cavanaugh's wonderful lead, we're going to put a lot on these two students. And you might remember them from last year when we came and talked about core values with you. So, to my left is Brooke Cavanaugh, eighth grader, and Arianna Howard, eighth grader. They also will be communicating with the high school rep to give you some updates. And if you ever want them to come back to a meeting in the future, they're more than willing to do that. So, they're serving as our kind of liaison. So, we've had a great start. I also have, besides the two of these wonderful people, I have Mr. Evans, who's a special facilitator, and Mr. Hook, who is the assistant principal at the middle school as well. So, we've had a great start. We welcomed in 151 new sixth graders. Lot of energy. Lot of noise, right? And they have really hit the ground running. They're, you know, a pretty wonderful group of kids. We had some concerns initially, just at the pure size of the class comparatively. And we moved 148 out, but we moved 151 into small sixth-grade classrooms. So, anytime you want to visit, I would really recommend you visit the sixth-grade classrooms. So, they've done a great job. Also have new, three new staff members this year. Katie Cardinal is serving as our literacy specialist, doing a lot of work with students who have some reading issues and also working with language arts teachers throughout the building. Hannah Stones is our new physical education teacher. Comes with a lot of energy. And Mr. Nat Werny is very envious of that amount of energy that she has. And then, Mr. Dowst, Timothy Dowst, is teaching TV media production to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, three periods a day in our building. We've got a lot of focuses this year on not only climate and culture of our building, but also building our community. And we'll have, the girls will talk a little bit about that as a continuation of kind of implementing our core values that Mr. Hook will talk a little bit about. We're also really looking at what, how we're doing what we do and are we getting the outcomes that we really want to. So, that comes with our work with teachers, but also with kids and seeing how data is really informing our instruction and what growth they're making as opposed to just hard, hard numbers. We're looking at how much they're growing through the work that we're doing over the three years and trying to find, you know, what is that balance between what we know in our heart and what we see in the data? And that's, that's going to be a real focus with teachers. But I brought much more talented people with me to talk, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Hook for a little bit.
So, my focus is on the core values. And we did a lot of work with this, developing them with the help of these two young students, as well as a lot of the other students, the community members, the staff, and really boiling those down to our core values, collaboration, independence, originality, perseverance, respect, and responsibility. This year's focus is really embedding those into our school, making it part of our community and what we, what we truly believe and live by daily. So, we started this with, we have a community group throughout the building. It's a small group of 10 to 12 students that meet with the teachers twice a week, every Monday and Friday, at the end of the day to kind of focus on this. Currently, they're working on goal setting, which will be part of our focus on the core values throughout the year, specifically to that is the responsibility piece this year. The teachers will revisit these goals with them, base short-term goals and long-term goals throughout the year and see what kind of progress they're making on. But that's really where we're moving and pushing our core values this year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Evans.
All right. Just from the special education perspective, we're still implementing a co-teaching structure within our school. We have 19 co-taught classes this year, so it's one more than we had last year, really utilizing our data tools to really explore what students add to be able to provide enrichment opportunities as well as remediation where it is appropriate. So, we're going to continue with that structure moving forward, and I think we've seen some really positive results from that.
So, Brooke and Arianna have both been on Student Council for the first two years of their time at the middle school. They're going into the third year, serving as really leaders along with a couple of their eighth graders. And as I said earlier, they'll talk with KJ just a little bit about what we're doing, just to give them updates, you know, whether it's face-to-face meetings or just through email, just to give you some updates. So, we'll turn it over to them. They, they are well-versed in how to present to very nice people, right? So, so who started?
So, this new year at Tingsborough Middle School, we've had many new additions, such as, not just in our core classes, but to our environment too. One addition would be community. It's a block at the end of the day that starts at 1:15. We collaborate with other peers and do strategic activities. The classes consist of 10 students per teacher, giving us a chance to learn more about our fellow classmates. We set goals, complete activities, and team-building games that improve relationships.
In the eighth grade, we have booths, which is a 25-minute period after lunch. We spend time on independent reading or catching up with Alex, the math program. It assists students with reading skills and math ability, giving them more knowledge. Another addition we added to this school year is the fact that students obtain their own personal Chromebooks for the day. During homeroom, each and every student has an opportunity in the morning to take their Chromebooks to various classes. This prevents the need for cell phones and misuse.
One activity that's hosted every year for the seventh grader is the Leadership Conference on October 8th, which will be attended by seventh graders, as I just said. Students will learn about good leadership qualities, a way to improve their school, and have an opportunity to meet with other students from district area schools. Student Council has had two meetings in our Planning Spirit Week, October 28th through November 1st. The week's activities include various dress-up days, activities that will include collaboration during the community, and wind blocks, a block party with different challenges and contests, and Aloha Friday, AKA a luau.
Fall sports and clubs have begun. This gives students numbers provisions to be involved within school activities. Clubs and sports include football, cross-country, field hockey, soccer, and Student Council, in which we had our first meeting, as Arianna said. Some clubs and activities that may apply for the students who have no interest in sports include Knowledge Bowl, PALS, Bowling Club, Yearbook Club, Robotics Club, Homework Club, and Theater, beginning in November. This variety of activities gives students many choices to collaborate with the school. There are a variety of upcoming field trips that involve our core values. For example, Bodaborg and Camp Bourndale. Bodaborg provides students with the ability to collaborate with their peers in strategic thinking in obstacles. It is a perfect activity that allows students to speak with others and gain relationship. Camp Bourndale was also a great opportunity for collaboration as it hosted multiple team equations, such as a shark dissection, obstacles, and many other classmate-induced aspects.
Thank you, Brooke. As eighth graders, we are provided with the expectations that we set, good examples towards the current sixth graders and grades below us. We receive numerous new responsibilities that we must tend to, such as behaving our age, acting properly, and respecting the faculty, which is also a set expectation for the district. Thank you.
So, very well-prepared. And I think what we've tried to impress upon students in our school, starting very early in sixth grade, is just personal responsibility. But as they have gotten older, and these two are great examples of just being engaged in decision-making and being a part of discussions and having opportunities to kind of impact their school. As you know, last year, the Core Value Process was a really eye-opening one because they changed the core values, a couple of core values, and they were challenged by our teachers to see what they really believed. And we're seeing that in their conversations. I attended the end of the Student Council meeting today, and they're really putting it into practice, probably 20, 20 to 25 students in the classroom, all engaging in not just social activities, but the way the school is going. And we're looking for feedback from them on the community block, on what they're doing in their wind block. We have extremely compliant kids. And what we're beginning to see is that they're compliant, but respectfully questioning things that we're, we're doing in the building and things that they're doing and pushing limits. Our hope is through, you know, through this process that they'll start to push at the high school too and be able to expand the opportunities for them at the high school and advocate for themselves. Because I think that's the most important thing that they can, they can take from school despite all, you know, on top of all the skills that they're going to learn, so. Questions, thoughts? They're ready for everything.
I felt like I was watching a newscast here, though. Go to Mr. Hook's for the weather or something. That was, that was great. That was a great presentation. You guys were phenomenal going back and forth. Nice job. Excellent.
Great job. Very well-prepared. Almost as good as the TES.
No bias, his daughter.
Honestly, great job. We say this every year, I'm always super impressed with how well the students present to us. Just sitting up here, sometimes I lose my focus and, you know, kind of get tongue-tied, and you girls were amazing. So, great job, well-prepared. What do you think of the community block?
Well, I think the community block gives students a chance to collaborate with the other students, and it just gives them a little idea of new activities that they aren't interested in.
And you get to know like a small amount of students, not as much as a big amount of your class, but you get to know them even like in a smaller group.
I think it allows you to gain relationship with people you may have not known as well, and maybe you want to be friends with them. And students that you usually did not have good relationships with, that's a chance to build on.
Is it the same students throughout the year, or?
Yep, small groups, 10 to 12 students, depending on the size of the class.
Okay.
We have, with teachers, we created, with our Core Values Committee, we created a menu of options with, around different themes. So, there was plenty of resources for our teachers to use, but they could also pick and choose what they did. There'll be some half-tos that we do. There might be some school-wide videos or presentations depending on what we're doing at a time. The goal-setting obviously looks different from eighth graders to sixth graders. And, you know, honestly, last week, last period of the day, after a week of NWA MAP testing, we decided that the whole school needed to go outside and blow off some steam. So, that was, it gives us some flexibility to do that. It's great that the Student Council's also going to leverage some of that time. We just feel like it's important to have teachers who can get to know a small group of students and that kids have an idea of who might advocate for them if they're not feeling completely comfortable. Also give us some insight into what's going on outside the school, as a lot of the conversations will be related, like literally, how was your weekend? What, you know, what'd you guys do? And you might get some insight that you wouldn't normally get in a regular classroom. Plus, the teachers kind of get to relax a little bit and not have to be, you know, on...
Yes, I think as we talk about social emotional learning and development globally, I said, this is just one avenue of where that really hit, the rubber hits the road at the, at TMS. The other thing that I heard that I, that I loved is the amount of student voice, kids making choice, kids impacting the school, whether it's my core values or the community block or, or just having some choice and voice in the school. I think it's critical because as you get to high school, and we want to see that continue to evolve, as you get to high school, you know, we want to foster more independence. And the only other suggestion I would make for this group is, I don't want you guys emailing back and forth. Let's carve out some time, get together, have a face-to-face conversation, because I think that's critical. I think that's, that's a good skill for everyone to have as well, really working through things. So, if we can not email and maybe have that face-to-face and work that time in, I think that's important.
We'll work around KJ's schedule, so. We can free these two up where they'll be doing, those can do that.
You mentioned a lot of activities and sports. Do you have any idea of the participation rates in those things?
I don't actually have numbers at hand, but we, we know that the, I want to say the field hockey team is probably as well-represented as any team we have. The Student Council, as I said, was packed at the gills. When we, when I first started, there were like three or four kids involved. It was great that they've, there's, I want to say there were 25 kids.
So, why don't we, why don't we get those numbers and put in correspondence for the next meeting? That's a great point, because you talk about participation at the high school being almost 70 percent co-curricular. I think that's another important number to get out there.
I think it's important for the community to know that there's things for these kids to do besides just go to school and come back home.
Sure. You know, there's a lot of opportunities to do other things besides play video games.
Anybody else?
You girls did such a great job presenting. We don't have any more questions.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Amazing job.
We'll give you a second to sneak out. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 9A out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie 600.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to invite the members of the Police Department up for Chief How and at all. So, as the committee knows, we have a tremendous partnership with our police department. Chief How's been a tremendous advocate for the SRO program. I know Sergeant May is going to spend a little bit talking about the history of the SRO program and how it's evolved to where we are today. So, it's, it's a great resource for our kids. We know that Bethany will be leaving us at some point here soon, and Officer Silver will be, will be stepping in the place. So, that's great. I think Chief is probably going to talk a little about that transition. So, we're going to talk about the SRO program. The other thing that we're going to talk about a little bit is about the dog, George, the therapy dog. I did reach out to the chief a few weeks ago to say, you know, the kids here, they'd like to see George come back. He's a great, he's a great visitor for the kids, and someone made some connections with him. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to, to Chief How, and I'll let him make the decision as to who speaks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for having us here. I'm really excited to be here tonight and to talk to you about the program. It's, it's really easy to come in here when you're surrounded by a group that we have here tonight, you know, no different than your school, and you hear, you know, what you have going on here tonight and, and your staff talking, and it's people really dedicated and passionate about what they do. That's, that defines these people sitting up here with me, and, and I'm proud to sit up here with them. We've put together a phenomenal School Resource Officer program. You know, four years ago, five years ago, who would have thought that, you know, we would have almost four full-time school resource officers in Tingsborough? Yet, we are. We do. And this town's around us significantly larger that have less.
So, we've, we've ramped up really quickly. We've worked really well with our school administration, and we've got some really important things done. And with that said, I, you know, Sergeant Manning, who's been here forever, sorry, Steve, and just year after year, just does a phenomenal job for the town, for the school, and he's put together this program with his heart and soul. And I know Steve's passion for it. I hear it every day. And Officer Bonza, a phenomenal addition, incredible addition, and she's going to talk a little bit about some of the things that she, you know, she's doing. And Steve is going to talk about the program as a whole, the therapy dog, another tool in the, in the tool belt.
And that kind of adds value to this program, all good things. Officer Silver, our, our new addition, future leader in the department, I have no doubt, and he's going to be phenomenal as well. And Deputy Woods is a year and a half into being the deputy chief, and he's, he's adjusting to the life of being an administrator and, but he has been central in overseeing this as well as we've ramped up. And we're learning too. We're learning to, you know, as we've gotten through this, to develop policy and to do other things that we weren't quite ready at the time to really ramp up a program that needed to kind of be ramped up in a hurry. And, and not to pat ourselves on the back, but we could, we certainly couldn't have done it without working with administrators like Mike Flanagan and other people. It's just, it's critical to have the teamwork that we do have. We're lucky in this town. So, with that said, Sergeant Manning.
Thank you, chief. I'm glad I get to follow you and not the two student representatives. That's a tough act to follow. I could have never pulled that off in eighth grade.
Eighth, eighth grade? So, I think what it started off with is just a little history on the School Resource Officer program. The, prior to last year, Officer Bonza, when Officer Bonza came on, it was just myself. So, what we did was, what I did was just go around and put fires out. And I was stretched very thin. So, you know, I spent three days at Greater Lowell Tech. I had two days at Tingsborough High School. And in addition, I would get calls from principals because I have relationships with them, Notre Dame Academy, Innovation Academy, Valley Collaborative. So, I was really stretched thin. So, it was just, as I said, going around, putting out fires. We got away from getting into the classroom and doing some teachings. Years ago, if you remember Sergeant Pivirato, he was on as a School Resource Officer. I was working underneath him, and we were able to do a little more proactive policing. So, we brought on Officer Bonza and, Officer Silver. I always call him Nick Russo as a kid who played football. I apologize. And we also have three, no, excuse me, two other School Resource, Resource Officers. That was, getting all balled up here.
Matt Cozio.
Yeah, Matt Cozio, Pete Kulisich, and Chris Wright. So, it's allowing us to be a lot more proactive, like I said. I'll be going into the elementary school Life Skills Program, if you could pass that over, deputy. What, what that involves is, it's eight classes. It's teaching the students about self-esteem, decision-making, smoking, advertising, stress, communication skills, social skills, peer pressure, and assertiveness. This was similar to the, the DAIR program that I did years ago with the fifth grade. There's been some concern about the DAIR program not delivering what this program does. I think it was two years ago, Superintendent Flanagan, you went with Selectman Cohane and had...
Chief How was there?
And Chief How. And we did the, and you, you brought this program. You thought it was, it was a great program, and so we switched to this. And I think it's, it's, you know, I did four classes last year in, in the fifth grade, and I got a lot of positive response from it. So, I'm excited about doing the complete curriculum this year. In addition to that, like KJ had said, going into the first, second, and third grade, doing a Halloween program, Halloween safety program. And as the year progresses, I'm hoping to bring some more classes in. You know, there's bike safety programs that I'd like to introduce, you know, stranger danger, that sort of thing. The difficult problem we're having now is trying to coordinate with the teachers, health curriculum, that sort of thing, to get in there and do some of these programs. But as a whole, I think, you know, I've got a lot of cooperation at the elementary school. They want me in there. They want these programs, so I think we're going to get it done. Moving forward, the, the having three part-time officers, there's three full-time officers now with the School Resource Officer program, myself, Officer Bonza, Officer Cozio. But like I said, with the three part-timers now, what it's doing is it's freeing us up vacations, trainings, things like that, where if Officer Bonza was out, we were struggling to cover the school that day. With three SROs certified, part-time, we're able to plug some of these holes. So, years ago, we had lapses in coverage. I know, Mr. Flanagan, you know, you talk about coverage in the school. You want somebody here all the time. This is allowing us to do that. We're, you know, staying on top of that, getting coverage in the schools. I wanted to introduce Nick, and we just wanted a little, little background on Nick. He's a 2010 graduate of Tingsborough High School. I wanted to introduce Nick, and I just wanted a little, little background on Nick. He's a two thousand and ten graduate of Tingsborough High School. He comes to us from the Essex jail. He was a corrections officer for the, for the jail system. And I don't know if he wanted to, you know, say hello to the board or introduce himself or tell us a little bit about yourself, Nick, but.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Silva. I started working with the department back in December as reserve. It was probably one of my proudest moments. I got hired full-time over the summer and got assigned to the schools, and I'm proud to be here. I'm a graduate of Tingsborough High School. I graduated back in two thousand and ten, went on to Assumption College after that, graduated from there, and as Steve said, Sergeant Manning said, I, I've been an officer with the Essex County Sheriff's Department prior to accepting employment here with the Tingsborough Police Department for four and a half years, and I'm excited to be a part of the SRO program. I'm excited to get back to the town that I think has given a lot to me. I think prior to all these SRO programs coming, coming out, a lot of people thought that having officers in the school would be a pipeline to prison or a pipeline to jail. A lot of people thought that maybe having the officers in the school, we were just going to jam kids up, and that's not the case. And basically, I'm proud to be part of a, a program that is a resource to kids. And even in the short time that I've been here, I think I started, it was August twenty-seventh was, started the school year. I've had kids come up to me. I've asked, I've had kids come up to me and ask for legal advice, ask for advice at home, people that just want to come up and say hello. And some of these kids, especially at the middle school, they're, they're really excited to see you and have you be part of their day. And to me, that it's, it's been a pleasure to be here. It's been a pleasure to be with the department, and it's been a pleasure to be in the school and to work under Sergeant Manning and work with Officer Bonza. I feel I have some pretty big shoes to fill. I've seen a lot of the things she's done so far with all the programs and all the courses that she's been teaching, the things she's been doing, and the impact that she's made on students here. I'm going to try my best to fill those shoes while she's out on maternity leave. That's my, the primary reason I'm here, is to step in and fill that vacancy for her while she's out on maternity leave and do the best I can to serve this community and serve this school. And it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm happy that the chief and the deputy and Sergeant Manning are going to allow me to do that.
If I could just jump in for one second at this point. I think that was one of my biggest concerns and fears that I expressed to the chief this past summer was, what do you mean, Officer Bonza is pregnant? What's going to happen? So you have to have the right person come into the role. I, I think we had this conversation. Not everyone is cut out to work in schools. And I will say that without a doubt, over the past month, Nick has fit in seamlessly and done a phenomenal job working in the school, so I, I look forward to that. You absolutely have huge shoes to fill when she goes, and don't get me wrong, we want her back when she's ready. You've done a great job, so keep up.
I think it's, Nick brought up a good point, too. You know, our role here as school resource officers is just not to make arrests, because that rarely happens. We not only just go into the classroom and, and teach some of these subjects that Bethany's going to address, but we're here as a resource. So we have staff members come to us, you know, with, with could be issues that involve, you know, it's saving them a trip to the police station to come in, could be anything, and, and staff members do reach out to us. So it's not only the students, but, so the program as a whole, I don't want anyone to get the wrong idea that, you know, early on when we came into the schools, we were here to make arrests, and, and they taught a DARE program. We're doing, we wear many hats here.
It's a proactive approach.
It, it absolutely is. So, you know, see something, hear something, say something, social media, vaping. There's a lot of issues that, when, you know, I'm looking around the room, I think we're all mostly the same age, some of the issues that these kids are dealing with now, we, we weren't dealing with, you know. So it's, it's an important program, and I'm, I'm glad we got your support, you know, for this. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Officer Bonza. She's going to go into some of the things that she's bringing to the school this year and some of her past accomplishments.
Okay, so we'll start with some of the programs that have already been introduced this year, and then we'll kind of move on to our expectations moving forward, and then next transition when I leave. So we started off the school year in September on a great note. We did the Officer Kind project, just as a positive way to start the year. We ran it in the high school special, special education class in Bridges, and it runs for approximately three weeks. I just pulled the box. We had two winners. I'm not going to tell you who they are, because they don't know yet, but we're going to have ice cream on Friday, so.
They're probably watching right now, too.
So we're also going to be running this in the middle school, but we're going to do it by grade level. So it's going to be on a much level, much bigger scale, and Nick will kind of take that over as we go. Also, we started a bullying aftercare initiative. It's a police-led initiative that works to support everyone involved in a bullying situation. So I put together some curriculum that I learned over the summer, and that will be implemented shortly at the middle school level. To go along with that, we have assembly planned for November. It's the anti-bullying project that's coming to Tingsborough, so we're very excited about that. And basically, what they do is they show a movie with a young girl. She's about middle school age, and the best part of this presentation is that the girl, the actress in the movie, is actually giving the presentation. So she can speak directly. It's not me telling kids, you know, not to bully or, or whatever. It's, you know, someone on their level that they can identify with. So I was very excited to find that. Let's see. So lastly, we're also planning a mock accident. We did a very successful safe driving presentation last year where we had impaired and distracted driver simulators, and then they could play it back, and they loved it, and I think they learned a lot of valuable lessons in that. This year, in kind of build off last year, we're going to do a mock accident. So it's coordinating police, fire, EMS. I'm going to try to get a helicopter, but no promises. And that will be right before prom. So that's one of our goals moving forward. Also, just to mention George. So George is my personal dog. He's in training currently to be a therapy dog. He was introduced March of last year and was met with open arms. The kids love him, and he's a great community policing tool for us. I mean, I met kids that I didn't even know existed in the school. I was like, are you sure you go to school here? Yes, I'm sure. So it was a great way for me to make connections that way, and, you know, to open up kind of that dialogue. So like Chief said, it's another tool in our toolbox that we can use and another resource for the school that's free of cost to them. So. So as always, we're offering the safe driving course. We go into classrooms. We do the impaired goggles. We do domestic violence. Vaping is a huge issue this year. We're currently looking into pricing out vaping detectors, looking at what areas maybe we might implement that. We do a self-defense college safety discussion, which we did last year as well. Drugs and alcohol are always an issue, too. So these are all things that Nick will be involved with as well.
I'll say, just as a parent of a, of a daughter who's a junior who's starting to think about college, I, I like the idea of college, college awareness, campus awareness, you know, anything we can do to, to teach these kids that, you know, you're not in Tingsborough anymore when they get on. University of Massachusetts, twenty-six thousand other students. So those types of awareness programs, I think, are incredible, because I do think that sometimes our kids are a little isolated, and the more we can get them out, the more worldly we can make them and, and help them see and be cognizant of the world around them, I think the better off it's going to be. So I think that's great.
And the connection to police officers as relationship elders and support and proactiveness, that's a message that I want my own kids to understand, that it's not, it's not an opportunity to run away from the police. You should be running to them at times and looking at them as a resource and a support system, whether it's in their town or as they go at school. So I appreciate that one.
Just to touch on something Mr. Flanagan said, too. Bethany's RAD certified. Do you want to just touch upon that? It's, it's, it's a resource for us. I know she tried to bring it to the school last year, and just through scheduling, and, and I think you needed to get a partner or whatever, and that fell through. But this is something we'd like to bring to the school, too. So could you just touch upon what the RAD programming is?
Yeah, so RAD is a self-defense program. It's specifically for female students. I'd like to see it in the upper grades. It's really open to anyone at any level, but especially girls going to college. So it teaches them like basic, basic self-defense, and it's really about, you know, making a quick move and getting away from that situation. And we really cover a lot of curriculum in that, and I would love to bring it here. It's a really great program.
Agreed. What's the example? What is?
Rape aggression defense.
So it's a great self-defense when you talk about students going off to college and just another program that we, we couldn't offer to the school, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could piggyback on Dr. Flanagan, and we talk about our children being structured in Tingsborough, I mean, and they are, between the after-school programs, the jobs, everything, our kids don't have a ton of time to get in trouble when, when they're active. Then they go on to college, and they have a class on Tuesday, a class on Thursday, and one on Friday afternoon. That costs us a ton of money. And one of the things that I brought up a few years ago that I'd still like to see implemented is some sort of a training class, not a training class, but something for parents of college students going up on their first year, of signs what to look for. Because you have these kids now that are bored all day. They have all these new friends and roommates and all these new influences, whether it's homesickness, whether it's drinking too much, whether it's drugs, whatever. Kind of an awareness thing for parents to look for over the first semester, first half of, of their first college year as freshmen. So I don't know if there's anything out there for that.
Well, maybe that's something we could run through Student Services, you know, where these kids, you know, those Student Services guidance councils are working with students getting off to school. Maybe that's something that the department could team with, with Student Services, and maybe there's somebody to come in, and, you know, we can do a Tuesday night, you know, an assembly type with, you know, senior parents.
I would also look at talking to the campus police up at U L O, see if they have, you know, they might have some suggestions to, maybe one of them can come in and say, these are the things we see freshmen doing. You should be aware of, that type of thing.
I have a contact at U L O, so maybe that's something we could do.
I mean, what timeframe? University police officer also, and he would probably volunteer.
What's the timeframe? Do I mean?
So that's a good, that's a good March-April presentation, right before the kids go off, just so the parents know what to expect.
At night time, seven o'clock?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, I'll do it right here.
We can look into that.
I remember dropping my own son off at Westfield, and when the Westfield State Police came in, and, you know, they told you all the signs and things to look for, and it was very informative. It was one of the more informative presentations of Parents Weekend there, so it's a great idea.
And the other thing I would recommend is if there's, you know, a program that you'd like to do, or maybe an after-school type of program, instead of trying to incorporate it into the school day where kids, you know, you can do like the training class that you talked about, you know, you can do it at, for a half hour after school or something along that line, and you don't have to really be concerned about all the other activities.
A few years ago, we did a RAD class here. It was Lieutenant Wagner did a class. What we ran into was a lot of the girls that are, you know, the after-school programs was interfering with sports. So it was like, you know.
But right in between, you know, if you try and pick it a day right in between the sports seasons.
An off-season, yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at that. That's.
To try and get some of those things in just all, I understand what you're saying, but there's always, you know, a little tiny block somewhere that you could.
We, we can try to fit it in between, like you said, between, I know the fall season goes Thanksgiving right into that Monday, so maybe the spring, the break in the spring season between winter sports, we can try to get somebody in here.
That's the football mentality. Most sports end the first or second week of November.
That's true.
Our teams go deep, I can tell you that, right? The only other thing that I'd like, when I looked at the, the Life Skills Training Manual, Eric talked about smoking, but really focused on nicotine. Do we plan on bringing any of the drug things into that with the two marijuana facilities going in?
Yeah, so that, that curriculum is three years old, and really vaping has just exploded in the last, say, two years. So Mass Public Health has a curriculum that I'm going to get them, you know, get from them, and not even just the fifth grade, but I think we need to get into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade with, with this information. So it's outside that curriculum. We'll get it in the fifth grade. We'll get that curriculum. It's just putting that program together.
So you can just supplement that program with resources.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And if it means getting, you know, an assembly type with a PowerPoint instead of five individual classes, we'll do it, but they need that information, so we'll definitely do that this year.
And with, you know, people being able to grow it now at their homes, I think the awareness of that, because even though you may not grow it in your home, your children are going to their friends' homes, and you don't know what's happening in those homes or those yards or what access they're going to have to things going forward. Plus, with all the creams and the rubs and the drips and all the other things that are out right now, the candies, the cookies, the whatever, I think there's a lot of exposure there for our kids, and I think educating them early on some of this new stuff is important, so.
Absolutely.
Just to piggyback off of that, I think being in the elementary school is really important. I hear from my son a, a lot about Officer Manning. Like, he talks about you like he knows you. And that's a testament to the fact that he's comfortable with you, and he sees you around town. He sees you in the school. That foundation is what's going to help as we get into the older years. So thank you for being in the elementary school. I think it's, it's really important to build that foundation.
Absolutely. I mean, when, when the police first got into schools, it was all about building those relationships, you know, and I, I think it's worked. It's worked in this town, you know, whether it's coaching some of the kids in sports, which I did through the years or whatever, and I got younger guys now. I'm getting too old for some of that stuff, but hopefully they, they pick up the ball, and yeah, it's, it's about after-school activities. It's about, you know, working the dances, being visible at football games, that sort of thing, being out there in the community. So it's been a success, and I, I imagine it's going to still stay successful.
Yeah, I mean, in our house, you're, you're coach. You're not Deputy Woods.
Exactly. That's, that is huge. They see deputy in a different light, you know, so, no, that's all about community policing. That's what it's about.
And then Officer Silva, thank you for coming back to our community. I think you set a really great example for the students that, you know, you can come back and give back to your community. You can be successful in life coming out of Tingsborough schools. We've had a lot of success come out of Tingsborough schools, and thank you for setting our example for our students.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
And congratulations and good luck, Bethany.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's clear. We have a very strong school resource officer program. I think they do a phenomenal job, a great partnership that we have, and we're just so thankful. I talked to superintendents around the state, around certainly Merrimack Valley, and I think we're, we're a notch ahead where we are. So thank you to them, and thank you to the, the board of selectmen and the, and the community for supporting this and the funding, because they made it possible. So we appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming out tonight, we're going to appreciate it. Have a great night.
I'm not making any more motions, Mr. Chair.
Where were we?
Item six, subcommittee update. Policy?
We did a lot of work tonight. We did some, we have some policies to reaffirm. All these policies were in your drop box, so we'll start with policy, which is the requirement for periodic review of policies, which is policy one point nine, and we're just reaffirming that policy. And then below are some of the annual policies that we're reaffirming, and there are policy one point six, the mission, vision, statement. A lot of these policies we went over last year, and so we're just reaffirming them now. Policy number one point seven, the district objectives. Policy two point five, fee for school, use of school facilities. Policy number three point eleven, acceptable use of technology for staff. Policy number four point eleven, acceptable use of technology for students. Policy number five point two two, bullying prevention intervention policy. Just a couple more. Policy number five point two seven, student user fees, and, and again, these were all updated last year and are still current. And policy number seven point one, lunch prices. So can I ask for?
I'd like a motion to accept these policies as reviewed, annual policies reviewed. There's no changes to them.
No changes?
No changes.
One point two is not being
Yeah, not 1.2.
Is not being reviewed. There is some questions on that that we want to look at in the next.
So do you want to read all the policies you're making the motion for?
No.
As presented, Officer A and B without 1.2.
Actually, since we're not in front of us, I think Julie should read each one.
You want me to read them? Sure, why not?
Okay, I think there's something about time limits for schools.
So we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 600.
And then, wait, I'm not done yet. And then also there's a draft of policy 1.21, public comment at school committees. This is a brand-new policy that Dr. Branko has so nicely put together for us. I felt that it was very important to have a policy about when people come to talk, and we've never had an issue with it. But he could foresee we could have an issue with it, which would be, it's important to have a policy. So make sure you read that policy through.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept policy 1.21 as a first read.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take care, 600.
And the last one is an updated policy number 6.1, pupil, pupil, yeah, transportation policy. And it replaces a bunch of policies, so, because what happened was there's a lot of procedure in this policy. So all the procedure was taken out, so it replaces policy 6.1, 6.5, 6.2, 3, 4. And so you made a nice succinct policy, so we're going to take that as a first read and make sure you get a chance to read that, and.
I'll make a motion to accept policy 6.1, pupil transportation as a first read.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take care, 600.
And that's it?
Thank you, Julie.
Number four.
I do admit. No policy on that, right?
Personnel.
Mr. Chair, we have two actual items on your agenda. Ally Bishop has requested a maternity leave due date January 26th. She intends to work up to that date. Katie Rich, high school math teacher, has also requested maternity leave due date November 30th. Informational.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of them.
Unfinished business?
Two items for you, for, okay, to my Mr. Chair. The first one's construction update. Dr. Branko is going to pull up some pictures from, nope, from Valley Collaborative, pick. Just so you can see if you haven't had the opportunity to drive by, that is the brand-new ductwork that is running in the cafeteria. The HVAC system that is now installed at the Lakeview School is incredible. It's energy efficient, and they could not be happier with the outcome of this. The project itself is completed at this point. Here's a picture of the exterior windows. This is a dated picture because as of this past weekend, that kind of ugly green trim has been painted navy blue. Valley Collaborative is really taking it upon themselves to put additional funding into the school to really clean it up and bring proper signage to the school and really make it their home. We're actually looking at a price right now to, not a price, we're going to do it ourselves, power wash the school as well on the outside to clean it up. Here's an interior view of the classroom. You can see both the ductwork and the brand-new interior windows. So it was just a great project that's completed. It's great for the school. It really, it really sets the school apart now compared to where it was even 10 years ago when I was dropping my kids off. They were 15 years ago, I guess, at this point. So really pleased with how it looks. We're in the process right now cleaning up the exterior of the building, both with paint and with signage and those types of things. We do have some paving to do, which we're going to look at, and that might be a spring project as funding becomes available to us from Valley Collaborative. But really happy with it, and I just wanted to share some pictures about the school. That's information only.
And if I could touch on it, Mr. Chair? Just a reminder that all of this work is being done at no expense to the taxpayer. I say that every time we bring up this school. There was no borrowing. All the funds that are needed to do this project are coming through either the lease agreement or Valley Collaborative stepped up and put this money forward. So this is a great thing for Tingsboro. It's not another empty building costing us money. It's a 12-year lease. It's just a great partnership, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you for filling that in. The other update on the construction is the T E S Culvert. We have some pictures here. I don't know if you've not had the opportunity to drive down the elementary school. It's a treat right now. So that's the open field on the left. You can see that all the material there. Just pull up the construction site of the culvert, probably pick two. Blow that up a little bit. Hence the one-way in, one-way out. As you know, as committee knows, we're forced to delay open house. Historically, when we have open house, where all this equipment in is that there's parking all the way down that road, even to the field where the resources and materials are. So it was, it wasn't fathomable to think we could host an open house with all this equipment, plus with the danger and it being dark. It's not a lit road. It didn't make sense to have a construction, active construction site during open house. So the project that was supposed to be completed by Thursday the latest, doesn't look like it's going to be completed by Thursday the latest. There was an issue in terms of one of the drawings not actually matching where one of the electrical systems was. So now it's a matter of waiting for National Grid. I feel like I've said that a lot in these meetings. Waiting for National Grid to come in, de-energize the line so that the construction crew can finish their job. I know that the Assistant Town Administrator, Justin Salzbeck, is on it, working with National Grid. So it's a matter of coordinating with National Grid and Verizon to move, de-energize the line, move the line, and then put the culvert in place and finish the project. So that being said, we're still going to have open house at the elementary school on the 10th. I believe Mrs. Kavanaugh is working on some type of staggered program so that we can have pre-K and K parents come in from 5:00 to 5:30. Potentially 5:30 to 6:00 is session one, 6:00 to 6:30 is session two. Let me back up. It used to be we did an lower-house open house and an upper elementary open house. The problem was a lot of parents had kids in both, and they didn't want to stay for the entire hour and a half, two hours with little kids. So we've changed that to session one, all grades, session two, all grades, whatever fits your schedule best. So that's being communicated right now. We're hopeful the project will be completed in time, but at this point, I'm not entirely optimistic. So that message will be communicated if the decision's made by Thursday, which is another week in advance. The ice cream social will happen, just not that night. We'll have to push that off and potentially partner that with the Scholastic Book Fair or something. Mrs. Kavanaugh is going to come up with a plan for that. So the kids will still get the ice cream social. It's, you know, we don't want to deprive the kids of anything, but in the same breath, we have a responsibility to be, provide a safe facility for them to come in and leave through, so. That's where we are, unfortunately. It's not ideal.
No. School bill and committee update?
Yes, I will take that one. We met last Wednesday, Becky, Paul and I, Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, we're all part of that committee. We had a good meeting. We came up with some brochures that hopefully people will be seeing around town. It's really the six bullet points, and six, I think, are some of the biggest questions that will be asked of us through this process. The first one, and if you don't mind, Dr. Flanagan, I'd like to run through them. Why now is been a big one. Why this year? Eight years we've been submitting our SOIs. And really this year, because we got accepted. That's really the answer. We got accepted. Fifty-five percent reimbursement is huge. Out of 70 school districts that MSBA went out and looked at, we were one of 12. We don't know where we fell in that ranking, but we were one of 12 out of 70 school districts in the state of Massachusetts. And that's huge. So, facility deficiencies, it goes through security roof, electrical, all that. New or renovate, and this is one that I really think is important, and Paul and Becky can talk about this as well. I think it's important that we discuss the fact that we're not asking for a new middle school. We're asking for a schematic design or a feasibility study to help us understand what we need. So as people say, and some people, "Well, we can't afford a new middle school." Well, that's not necessarily what MSBA may recommend. They may recommend an addition on, to this building as a middle school wing, where we could share different parts of the building between the middle schools and the high schools. They may say, "We'll renovate the existing middle school." They may say, "Well, there's really nothing we can do but build a new school." But without the schematic design and feasibility study to get passed at the last one, town meeting on November 12th, we won't know the answer to that. And unfortunately, with this type of program, fortunately, we got accepted, is you can't go any further unless you do this part of the process with MSBA. So it's not going to be the group at this table that says, "We want a brand-new middle school," or "We want a brand-new renovation," or whatever. They're actually going to bring MSBA experts in to help us with this process as well. So on November 12th, we've, with help from Dr. Flanagan and work that he's done at looking at other districts and MSBA and the schools that have been approved, we as a committee voted on going to town meeting with the feasibility, schematic design feasibility study, not to exceed 950,000. I think it's very important that people understand that that is reimbursable through MSBA up to 55%, whether we do a project or not. So that figure, and that money can be kind of put off during the project. So I ask that everybody take one of these with you, discuss them with your friends.
And just to add to that, the November 12th meeting, the warrant article needs a two-thirds majority vote for it to pass. If the town doesn't vote in favor of it by two-thirds majority, then the project ends right there.
And plug the Community Information Night on October 16th.
Yes.
Beginning at 6:30 at the Tingsboro Middle School. We'll be hosting Community Information Night to kind of let everyone know where we are historically, why we're here, and answer any questions anyone can give.
Also, if anybody has any questions about the building, and forgive me that I don't remember the name of the company that did our.
La Valley Brenzinger.
La Valley Brenzinger. What they did for us in evaluating our buildings and what our needs are in short and long term. The school building committee's website, sbc.tingsboroughps.org, is open and available for everyone to go look at. Hopefully, everybody does that. There's a lot of good information. There's some videos and presentations, as well as meeting resources, who our members are, and the MSBA correspondents that we've had. So I ask the public to get involved, get informed.
Thank you. Finance?
I don't know if Dr. Flanagan wants to add anything.
No, great.
Finance, Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's meeting, there were seven bill warrants presented to the committee. Those warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. I do have them all back signed. Also for signing of bills at your work session last week, there were 12 warrants presented and signed. Those warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive as well. For signing of payroll, in your drive are the three September payrolls with amounts for your review. We also have your annual approval of your actual spending in 10C. That is your budget, and what it looked like at the end of June. Your budget is the most volatile in the town. I mean, we set a budget usually in March, and we open the doors in August, and already the line items are antiquated at that point, and we have to pretty much roll with what's thrown at us in terms of items that come up. So through all your line items, you'll see pluses and minuses, and at the end of your budget, it will normally say zero. It says minus $323. You did not overspend your budget this year. We have a phantom encumbrance that we cannot remove off of the report. We basically paid a bill, closed out a purchase order. That purchase order record never cleared out of the financial system, so you did not overspend your budget. You're actually at zero. Town Hall has acknowledged that as well. At this time, I would ask that you make the annual acknowledgement of your up-and-down line items by approving the report as presented tonight.
You will seek a motion to approve the report?
Make that motion?
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I'd like to thank Joe for all his hard work and all the budget work and putting this stuff together, so thank you.
Other question on the accounts is the class accounts. Is there any way to clean up the, we've got one class in 1986 that still has $320 in their account. Is there any way to clean those things up?
Actually, I can address that as we get into 10D for the August report. I'd be happy to, actually, if we want to finish up 10C first.
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take care, 600.
Thank you. Also in your drive is the August financial package, your FY '20 budget, year-to-date through August, as well as your revolving accounts and the student activity accounts. To Mr. Mitchell's question, we actually recently have been working with our internal auditors in terms of looking through our student accounts and cleaning up some of the older ones. And that is actually something that we're going to be working with, going through the process of cleaning up 2019 and then working backwards, releasing them to the class officers. I do have some nice forms that I received from other districts in terms of the actions that you take to cut them the check. And then it's the class officers and members of the class's responsibility to hold those funds for any class events going into the future. So we will, you know, again, working with Mr. Ogden, start with the class of 19 and work back to the ones we can reach out to. I think we have a pretty good handle on an advisor or a class officer where we can reach out to. Any other ones that we might not be able to liquidate, it's a matter of putting it into a newspaper, and if we have no responses, we could, we actually can liquidate them into the current classes. It's okay, Jay. You might get some money there. I'm sure.
I've been here since class of 1998. 1986, I might be out of luck, but I can help with the rest of them.
Can the classes donate it back?
Yes.
To the schools?
Absolutely.
That's $27. I don't think it's going to make much difference to them. That may be happening for the classes.
Thinking, you know, like, sometimes they have 25 or 30-year reunions that more than one class gets together at, and just combining those for a, you know, just to put that money into an account, that type of thing.
The auditors do recommend that we don't hold these for the classes and wait for them to have reunions and other events. They actually want us to close it out to a class once all the bills are paid. Feeling comfortable in saying, "Class of 19, everything's been paid. We're not going to have any surprises." So we're going to work with those, with those class officers and start doling out this money so that when we have the auditors come through next year, hopefully we have most of these cleaned up.
So you would hold it for a year and then?
Would hold it until we're confident that any bills, the bus bills generally come in in July and August after Senior Week. You know, there's an occasional bill that might slip through the cracks that comes wandering in this time of year. But seeing the activity and what a class, and the year class looks like, I don't believe there's anything out there that might surprise a class of 19.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
And that's it tonight.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm good.
I'd just like to encourage the people in town to attend the information session on October 16th at the middle school to find out more about the middle school program.
I wanna thank the Police Department for coming in, the School Resource Officers, I was having a conversation with some friends this weekend, and we were talking about how my generation did conflict resolution a little bit different than what is done these days, and I think it's because of some of the programs that the School Resource Officers have, but on top of that, they, I think a skill has been lost in some of the kids in that they don't know how to have a difficult resolution to a conflict, and I think that's something important for the kids of this generation to learn, to be able to stand up for yourself when you're, you know, not, it doesn't have to be physically, but when you're, you are in a situation where you feel you're in the correct position. So I think that's something that's incumbent upon the community, and the schools, and the School Resource Officers as a whole, to, you know, make sure that it's not just the therapy dog we're teaching, it's how to handle a situation where it, you know, a therapy dog is not the answer, there's some other answer and some other resolution to it, especially when they go into college, things only that might. I appreciate the work that they've done, and I think it's a great resource to the town and to the schools, and I hope they continue, but I hope they also look at some of the other aspects of conflict resolution.
I do. I'm all set, Steve.
Great job by our students from TMS, that was a great presentation, I love seeing the kids come up here and really nail it, so that was great, thanks to our Police Department, and, and I, he likes it when I do this, Joe Messina, to keep your eye on the prize the entire time, you hit the nail right on the head, the budget we present in March is vastly different than the one that's in effect the first day of school, so for the community, you understand, there are so many moving parts and pieces within that budget, and to manage that, and he does a great job of it, so thank you, Mr. Messina.
I also wanna thank TMS for coming out, the student reps were amazing, as always. Thank you to the Police Department, great presentation, I like that the SRO program has been expanded over the last couple of years, I think it's great for our schools, great for our students, hope to see that continue.
THS will be here after our next meeting.
Excellent. We do not have a need for executive session tonight.
Most adjourned.
I will second.
Discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take care, 6-0-0. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.